Questions from the board?
I have a couple of things. You talked about the 1966 drought and the 15 firefighting water access sites.
Yeah.
So, how many of those sites are set up right now to withstand that kind of a drought? Did you look at that?
Yeah, so that's a good question. Phil, I'm not sure if we, in the current assessment, looked at where those water sources would stand right now with that kind of drought. Part of the challenge is addressing, you know, figuring out, you know, what is that? What was that drought? Where was it? So, we have some of that information, but I don't believe we have specifically, you know, identification of this one would pass, this one would fail.
And you talked about when, looking at some of the farm management plans, that one of those ideas would be implementing wells. So, I guess as the entire town, all our residents, is supplied by private wells. When you looked at this thing, did you look at how any of these droughts would impact people's private wells?
Right. So, yeah, and part of the, as, you know, folks who have private wells know, you know, one of the concerns is that you're not impacting your neighbor, right, in the installation of your well. So, that would definitely, that would need to be a consideration as part of, you know, the permitting process to be able to put in an additional well.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Other questions?
Hi, my name's Robert. Did you look at the waterways themselves of where they travel through the town of if a drought happens, how low those will actually get, and where they'll be at, and what can be done about that?
Yeah, I mean, we looked at, we looked at the waterways, we looked at, Rebecca, we wanted to make sure that we've got a representative sample of the agricultural sites and the firefighting sites. So, working with the town, we focused on the five agricultural sites and then the 15 firefighting sites. Some of those did have waterways, but many of the firefighting sources did not. There were more ponds. What we found in Carver is that drainage area determination is quite challenging because of the tropical record relief in the town, whereas in a much steeper community, it's a lot easier for us to determine drainage areas. And so, what we're actually getting for the true flow. So, that was actually a challenge on this project, and we, for the reasons that I mentioned before, decided when we're looking at this from a drought perspective, it really comes down to, in a big way, groundwater flow and groundwater elevations. The aquifer is really the storage for the water sources. Other than looking at the areas that, and this is the map that I showed before, where there's a fair amount of surface water, you see very little groundwater level drop. So, the surface water is very important to the groundwater aquifer during a drought. This is a map that shows the anticipated effects of that 1966 drought record. And then, the red shows up to a six-foot groundwater elevation drop. The green shows a zero to less than one foot drop. So, what this is telling us is that those surface water sources are very important, and that ultimately, the water sources in those, in the green zone, have a higher level of resiliency already as a result of that. So, I guess, I think I answered the question, but not perhaps specifically. Okay, all right, there. So, again, this is the map that we wanted to show, which was a very helpful study. This is, again, a drought that was estimated in 1965 to have a recurrence interval of at least 200 years. I mean, statistically, you wouldn't expect to see a drought of that magnitude more than once in 200 years. You've heard of the 100-year flood. This is a 200-year drought. But that was in 1965. The drought got worse, and there wasn't any additional statistical analyses done. So, this is a very severe drought that we're using to give a sense of what the impacts are. And we think it's, you could prorank this, and if there were measurements taken in 2016 for the 2016 drought, you might see a similar relationship, but you wouldn't see as deep a drop in water level. We've heard a range of zero to one foot for sources around the community. There were some farms, I think, that had higher levels of drop, and that was more related to the fact that they were drawing a substantial amount of water to their farming activities, and that was causing a water level drop. In areas where there was no activity, just the ambient drop in water level, we heard zero to one foot. So, we're thinking it was probably distributed in similar to the way this map shows it for the 1966 drought.
Other questions?
One more. Did you guys look at any grant opportunities for us with this process of if we want to implement something? Are there other grants out there? Where can we go?
Yeah.
Is that addressed?
Yeah, so we actually have a section in the...
Excuse me, why don't you pull the microphone?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yep. So, we actually have a section in the report that kind of, that addresses different grant opportunities that are out there. I do think that, as Phil mentioned, the action grants are probably one of the most attractive, really, for this type of project because of the build-on nature of this, which is really how the MVP program is set up for communities to build on. But we did identify in the report, and a little bit of it is a case-by-case basis, you know, depends on what other activities you could sort of join with to provide multiple benefits. Would you qualify for something that had to do with ecological restoration? If you were also, you know, removing invasives or planting submerged aquatic vegetation? Are there ways to craft this to maybe do things a little bit differently, or think a little bit more creatively to allow for more, for more grant, you know, more, greater grant opportunities, or sort of co-benefits and co-applications? But I think, right now, our assessment is that the MVP program remains one of the best options for projects like this.
I guess I have one question. So, the focus, obviously, was agricultural and fire.
Right.
Based on the data you collected, though, I guess one of the things when they look at that drought of 1966, and I look at the fact we've got about 3,300 residential homes in the town, is there any way of using that data to determine how many of those homes might have been affected in that drought? Because most of them, I think most of us have shallow wells.
Right, right. So, yeah, that's a good, that's a great question. I mean, the, so the groundwater mapping that Phil just showed is probably a good, again, worst-case scenario. So, to the extent that there is information for, you know, wells that were, you know, I'm thinking of my own well drilling, right? I drilled a well, you know, a drill was, well, well was drilled at my house, and there's, you know, there was a record of it filed with the town. How deep was it? What type of construction, all that? It probably would be possible for at least wells where there was that kind of data to basically build a layer, a GIS layer, and then intersect the two. So, where, you know, where's the well screened to be drawing water from? And where are we, you know, where would a potential drop be in this sort of drought of record situation to get a sense of, yeah, are there people who were, you know, who are going to be impacted in a severe drought? I know just anecdotally, from my town in Western Mass, that in 2016, there were folks with shallow, you know, shallow wells that were absolutely, you know, impacted, and, you know, ended up having to drill, you know, not the 80-foot well or the 100-foot well, but the 3, 4, 500-foot well. And I don't know if that sort of anecdotal experience was felt here as well in 2016, but for folks with shallow wells, I would imagine, you know, they probably may have experienced the same sort of thing. But, yeah, I think there is the potential to take this Masterson study, this USGS study that was done, take that data, and it may involve some research and cataloging and, you know, figuring out what those well depths were, but I think you could make a stab at figuring out how many folks and where they are that would be impacted, again, by severe drought.
That's what I was thinking, is that if there is, if we were, because I think with climate change, the, every 200-year severe drought, the frequency could well increase.
It's changing, right, yep.
So, if we use the 1966 drought as an example of the worst-case scenario, at least that we've seen to this point in time.
Right.
If there was a way of estimating how that, how many people would be impacted, and where that might be impacted, that should be part of our emergency planning to figure out how we're going to get water to those folks as well.
Right. And I think particularly for North Carver, because if I'm remembering now, sort of the kind of, you know, planning documents, that's a potential growth area for the town, right, as well. So, given the fact that we're seeing in, you know, and based on these simulations from USGS, a greater drop in some of those areas, we'd really be concerned about water supply, you know, in that area and having adequate, you know, adequate supply, you know, for folks that were in that region, as well as in Southern Carver as well, and that orange, those two orange areas are the potential, the greatest areas of concern.
Yeah, the red is minus four to minus six, meaning the groundwater could drop one to six feet. The orange is the next worst condition, minus two to minus four. So, Northern Carver and Southern Carver. And then, the lime green is one to two, and then, as I mentioned before, in the area where you have a lot of surface water, that's where you have the least impact. It's the most resilient at this point. But the good news in Carver is you've got a wonderful aquifer. So, if someone has a shallow well, they probably would have to go too much further to get into the groundwater table.
Yeah.
But it is a good indicator, you know, if people live in this area, it would hurt for them to know that, that if there is a severe drought, this area's going to get hit the most, and they may want to check their wells and see how deep they are. I'm sure the newer wells are, some of the older ones certainly can do in some cases.
And groundwater is particularly problematic, you know, in terms of climate change, and, you know, a lot of folks in water resources have been really focused on surface waters because we can see it, right? We know when the stream dries up. With groundwater, it's much harder. We can't see it necessarily, so you don't, you don't know unless you're specifically monitoring. Also, the sort of cumulative effectiveness that we see, you know, groundwater has a slower response time than surface water, so we may not see the effects of this as rapidly as, you know, as we will with surface water, but then, when we do see them, they're potentially pretty, you know, pretty dramatic. So, yeah, I think this, this study by USGS provides a great, it's a great tool, it was a great resource for us to get an understanding. But, yeah, I think, so the very long answer that Phil and I gave to your question is that I think, yeah, with a little additional data research, that would be possible to sort of match up where those areas are, and that, you know, and that, I will mention also, that that type of activity is the type of activity that is eligible for an MVP grant in terms of identifying, you know, folks who are most vulnerable, and, you know, figuring out, you know, how to address that.
This graphic was used for looking at the, showing how the agricultural sources fall out in relation to those areas of groundwater drop. And so, that would be something that would be important in the design of the community measures for each individual farm. And similarly, for the water supply, firefighting water supply sources. It gives us a good sense of, you know, where they are and what you would expect in a drought condition. And that drives the conceptual design measures that I moved, in which actually I showed you those. I showed the graphics, and if you have a few minutes, tell me when to leave.
Okay.
These are the sources that we, the 15 sources that we had investigated, and these are the prioritization process that I am moving to show the priority of these water supply sources. The larger the circle, the higher the priority. This essentially is the agricultural sources. That's the graphic that shows the integrated farm discussed. Again, the agricultural sources in relation to the particular groundwater drop. This is a conceptual farm and showing the various resiliency measures that could be undertaken. Recycling, the end of the cranberry pond, back to the head of the pond, putting in wells, installing new reversions, deepening the pond, widening the pond, or expanding the pond, tapping into adjacent sources, just to give you some sense of what those consisted of. And again, the vulnerability of the firefighting sources in relation to groundwater drop. And then, this is an indication, a generic indication, but detailed enough to show us the area that the chief said he needed for trucks to pull off. And then, the area of excavation, this being the current groundwater, or the current depth of sediment, this being the depth that we dredge to for, this being the current sediment level, excuse me, this being the current trench requirement to make the source resilient, this to bring it down to the 2016 drought. Keeping it wider than the trench. This is the section, that essentially shows the same thing. Normal water level, current bottom. We'd want to bring it down to this level to have a two-foot depth on the top, and then a two-foot depth for where the screen goes and where sediment is good to accumulate. So, essentially, we want a four-foot depth at all times. So, going down to the 1960s drought level, we want four feet minimum depth below that. So, it gives you a sense of how much material we're removing. And we've actually gone through a cost estimating process to develop a budget for doing all 15, and then the 10 additional, 15 high priority, then the first priority, then the 10 second priority firefighting sources. I think that's it for the graphic.
Sarah?
Thank you. Thank you. I just have a quick question. In your plan, how, what is the, what is the plan to encourage the cranberry growers to implement some of these things? Because, you know, they're all very expensive. I mean...
Yeah, that's a fair question. And what we've talked about doing is, we discussed identifying the potential resiliency measure, and then meeting individually with the farmers and talking to them about what works for them. And then, having them essentially come up with a program, and then, the town would have to look at it and say, how do we prioritize these on a town-wide basis? And part of it relates to where the farms fall in relation to the drought vulnerability based on that 1966 drought simulation mapping. And part of it relates to, I think, the willingness of a farmer to come up with a match, because there's got to be a match associated with any grant application. And again, this is something that really needs to be discussed with the town, how they want to handle this. Would the town want to contribute? Should this be something that the farmer contributes as far as the match? The good news is the farmers are very resilient, and I think it would be relatively easy for them to come up with a match with their labor and their equipment, doing some of the resiliency measures themselves. So, you know, with an overall project cost, they'd have to do 25% of the level of effort to cover that portion of the grant. It could be a mix of in-kind services and monetary contribution, and again, it's a matter of the town's will, how they want that to work. If it's all farmer, if it's part farmer, part town, but that's how we envision it happening. We thought initially about specifying resiliency measures for the five farms we've looked at, and then we realized, there's so much we don't know. That if the growers do know, they know how their farms operate. They know the agreements they have with other growers as far as release of water, recycling of water, and they know what their operation consists of as far as equipment and manpower. So, too many questions, and we didn't want to be the ones to force a solution onto the usual farms. I think that's the next step in this program, is to do that planning for the original farms.
It's definitely more complicated. I think the public, you know, the general public benefit for the firefighting water sources is clear, right? Benefits the entire town. Obviously, the cranberry growing industry is tremendously important, you know, as an economic driver, so it has a general benefit to the town, but figuring out those pieces of how to make it work, I think, is a discussion that will, you know, knowing now what comes out of this plan, how it goes forward, who becomes sort of the champions for this, is something that'll be the next discussion, really, that the town has to have with their, with the growers, and maybe with some support from the Cranberry Growers Association as well.
Okay, thank you.
All right, and could you just, oh, sorry, yes, ma'am. Sure.
I have a quick question. So, the orange that you showed up there, that was very close to the state forest, and from a 1960s forest buyer, that had me concerned.
Yep.
And then, number two, what about public awareness of water conservation? And then, what's the difference, the population in 1965 to the population now, and the use of water?
Sure.
I mean, obviously, it's probably quadrupled.
Right. So, I'll try to address those sort of one by one. I'm going to start with your last one. So, the, so the simulation that was done by USGS was for withdrawal, so water withdrawals from the aquifer as of, I believe, it was 2009, so sort of mid-2000s, so relatively recent. They also had a second projection that looked at estimated 2030. So, that would be not necessarily increased population, but increased withdrawal, you know. So, what was projected? So, they took the, you know, the 1960s drought, and it's, okay, if we're taking this amount of water out in 2005, where are we at, right? So, that's probably pretty accurate, although there's kind of a growth boom in this area right now, too. So, I think that sort of gets at your first one, which is a great, you know, it's a great point. The, or your last question, your first question about the firefighting, you know, the Miles Standish Forest, yeah, absolutely, and that was, you know, that is something that, obviously, the fire department is acutely aware of and concerned about. So, right, and that's, that is definitely a reason that, and we have a few sources that were part of those priority 15 that are, you know, are on that side of town, near that. So, it's definitely, that is definitely a consideration because that's a huge fuel source to burn right there, yeah. And then, I'm sorry, tell me your main...
Conservation.
Oh, conservation measures, right.
Conservation.
Right, yeah. So, that's a good point. So, yeah, I think in, we don't have anything specific in this plan of, you know, of course, it's, you know, it's just sort of generally for all, you know, all communities, there's great, you know, there's opportunity for, you know, water reuse conservation in terms of how you use water around your own home. Also, you know, also things, and I'm not familiar enough, I apologize, with the bylaws in town to know about things like use of green infrastructure, things like that with new construction, that encourage, you know, recharge, you know, recharging groundwater supplies is extremely important. So, water conservation, encouraging recharge of groundwater supplies are, you know, are, should be priorities for every community, but certainly are ones that rely heavily on groundwater. But, yeah, public education is always sort of a piece of this, and I think the conversations with the cranberry growers, that's something that, you know, obviously, they're aware of, and maybe there's the opportunity with this plan to have further discussions with how that might, you know, how that might happen, or how, you know, additional measures could be put in place.
Thank you.
Sure.
I finally thought that.
Thanks for your question. Thank you.
I guess I just could ask you to repeat exactly where you're going from here.
Sure. Yeah, so, just to wrap up, so, we're at the very end stages of this grant round. All, we'll, kind of, all the things we discussed tonight are in our draft, which is, we'll go, we'll come first to the town later this week, we think, or the next day or two, and then to EEA at the end of the month. And that will technically wrap up the work on this portion of the project. There'll be some time for the town to, you know, package up all the paperwork and get all the reporting requirements over to the state, but that will sort of, you know, end this phase of it. But the way these grants are, these are set up, and the way this program is set up, is really that each, each grant kind of, you know, asks you to look to the next thing, right? So, I think the next thing now with this sort of implementation plan and these ideas is, and, you know, it's really, given the cycle that the state has been issuing RFPs for these grants, which we anticipate will be late summer, early fall, just based on what we've seen, really, July is not too early to start thinking about the next grant application, and where do you go from here, and how do you, you know, how do you, where do you want to take it from here? And, you know, what is the opportunity to do that? And is it with the firefighting water sources, you know, that sort of tiered approach that Phil talked about? You know, where do you go? I mean, the nature of these grants being just a year-long, you know, there's only so much you can accomplish in that timeframe, and, but they really are designed to kind of push you to the next step. Like, okay, you thought about it, now you've looked at a plan. Okay, so now, are you ready to do design and permitting? And then, are you ready to do construction after that to, you know, to really get some shovel-in-the-ground type of implementation?
Yeah, I think, I think we propose to meet with the town sometime in, you know, after the report is in, after the documentation is in, sometime in July, to talk about what we, what are the strategies, what does the town want to do, and begin to come up with an approach for the next grant round. As we did with this grant round, meeting with the town, and coming up with an approach and strategy and tracking the grant application. So, I think, you're right.
Yeah.
July timeframe.
It comes up fast, yeah.
It's going to be coming pretty quickly, so.
And I'd just like to say, on behalf of Phil and myself, and the other engineers who worked on this project at Fussin' and Nail, it was a real pleasure working with folks in the town. I mean, it's a community that's really engaged, and that always is a pleasure for us to see folks who really, you know, care about what's going on and want to plan and prepare. We had a lot of cooperation, both from folks in town, you know, Craig in particular, the fire department in particular, was fantastic, as well as, I mentioned, the Cranberry Growers Association was a real asset to this project. So, we want to thank you for that, too, and for the level of participation that the town had in this.
Well, thank you very much. A very in-depth presentation. We really appreciate it.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And certainly get back to us with anything else that we can help and provide.
Okay, great. And if folks do have any comments, any comments on the form, I'll just mention again, feel free to hand them back to Phil or I, or I'm sure you could give them to Michael, and he'll get them to us, or you can email us at carvermvp@fando.com. So, thanks.
Thank you very much. Okay, we will move on to select board updates, and we will start tonight with Mr. Townsend.
Well, a couple of things. First of all, I have my office hours scheduled for next Tuesday, but I have a work conflict, so I have to cancel those office hours. I will have something coming in Sep, yeah, sorry, in July. I think I'm going to try to take the office hours out of Town Hall and perhaps do them at the council aging one morning. I'll have an update on when that'll be. And then, I just, I had a couple of questions just for the town administrator. So, back when we passed the stretch code at a town meeting, we had to do a couple of other things to qualify for the Green Communities Grant. I think we had to do the municipal energy plan and the vehicle purchase plan. Do you have any kind of updates on where we are with those?
Yes, we have SERPeds working on that as we speak. They're doing that under a grant program for us, so they're the ones that are actually spearheading that for us.
Okay. And do you think we'll have those completed in time to apply for the grants later on this year?
That would be the goal. I can't commit to it right now, but that's the objective they're working on, to move that along. And Stephen Cole was, made sure that that happened before he left full-time.
Thanks. That's all I have.
Mr. Valben?
All right, I got a few things, yeah. All right. One of the issues that I was, been talked about from other residents of the town about commercial businesses being run out of residence or whatnot, and the effects that they'd have on them. Where was, where would a resident go in relationship to that? Do they go to us, the town administrator's office, with their permits, if they're given one? And how does the public have a chance to look at them? Because either they're starting their vehicles up extremely early, they're running really late, they're working on all days, Monday through Sunday, and then, some of the dumping of debris along fence lines and in other areas. These type of issues are coming up, and some people don't know how to address those issues.
Well, in terms of finding out if people are permitted, I think the town clerk has a record of everybody that has a business license in town, and people that operate in their homes are required to get the business licenses as well. So, that could be one place to start, just to find out if they're legally, you know, licensed. In terms of complaints about hours of operation and so forth, I guess, you know, I've seen that more in the cranberry side of things, and we've got the, we've got the, what's that? The Earth Removal Committee that sort of deals with a lot of that. We haven't had, I haven't seen that come up a lot, where people have had complaints about, I mean, I do know there's someone down on South Meadow Road that's, you know, got a, got a house, residential home, but he's got a couple of big trucks that start up early in the morning, you know, so I think that's the sort of thing you're talking about. Not sure what the recourse would be for them to go to for a complaint, which is, I think, what you're asking is...
Yeah, but where do they go, and how do they resolve the issues?
So, I think there's a, there's many layers to this discussion. The first stop should be to the building department for the building inspector or the building commissioner, and that's where there should always be an initial complaint done. As we may recall, is that this past fall and early spring, the Board of Selectmen were working on a nuisance bylaw that would, in essence, empower the building department to address some of these items. So, I think, one is that we have to be aware that we can't enforce everything, nor do we have the power to enforce everything under the sun. So, you have to see what the issue is and determine, is it enforceable, is it not enforceable? What the nuisance bylaw was to do was to actually give some authority to the building department so they can do certain things. And I know that that was tabled this year for town meeting. I do believe it's going to be brought up again, but until that's done is that they are impotent to some extent based upon their regulations. Now, moving to another layer, is there are certain permits... Now, moving to another layer, is there are certain permits and certain uses that are just not allowed in residential neighborhoods. And currently, there are a few properties and projects and items that the building commissioner and our town council are engaged in to identify ways of controlling that situation and people that are potentially doing things illegally. And that puts us into a whole legal quagmire that town council's looking at right now. And I guess, you know, just to summarize this, is, this is an issue that, you know, the building department brought to us. They wanted to focus on the nuisance bylaw to give them the authority to address some of these things. And as a policy board, at some point, the Board of Selectmen will need to readdress that and bring that to town meeting to give them the full authority of what they need to do. But back to your original question, all directory requests should come to the, to the PEP office. Now, they will say, and that there are some items that they can't address, and when those that can't get addressed, they do send those to the Board of Selectmen. We can't address them either, because we don't have authority to do it, but at least they're letting us know which things they need to have the nuisance bylaw pass to give them a little bit of authority.
Okay.
One other thing I would say, Bob, is that we did have a complaint come in about, from someone that had a neighbor whose kids were running, you know, the sport bikes and everything really loud, early in the morning, late at night. And the only recourse after investigating it that we had was you can make a complaint to the police about the noise. So that barring, you know, until we get something, some more nuisance bylaws in place, it's basically, if it's a noise, a real loud noise issue, then you can go directly to the police for that.
I do want to pick up on Ron's side and give the Earth Removal Committee due credit, what due credit is deserved, is that when they issue earth removal permits, they have more autonomy to work with the end user to make some adjustments. And with that, their chairman Gary Garretson will go out at any time in the morning and A, independently verify what he's hearing, because we always want to verify what's going on. And once he does that, as he usually convenes a meeting and/or talks with the operator, and adjustments are usually made to modify activities to be more amenable to the neighborhood.
Next one is, actually, we'll kind of go through, oh, the noise one, is the issue with the baseball fields and the noise complaint that was given there. I think that was, my son's being there on baseball, you get loud, and I think that being able to sing the national anthem and to call people's kids' names out should be really one thing that we.
You're talking about these fields out behind here?
Yeah, the ball field issue.
I mean, because I know, like, when the football games are being played over at, you know, Carver High, you know, I'm a few streets over, and I can hear all the loudspeaker announcements, and you can hear the crowd, you can hear the, so, I mean, that's, it's so intermittent that I can, they can make the complaint, but I, you know.
Right. So I hope that starts back up again, and that's my.
And Bob, just on that, that's a private issue, that's a private league doing that, the town's not telling them, to my knowledge, that you can't use a loudspeaker.
And I think from what I saw, that they are starting that.
Excellent. The URP, I know we had an update, probably about five months ago, four months ago. Every, like, six, six, eight months, if we can get an update, I know the RDA wanted one every six months, that we get an update also with that for the URP, to see where it's going, to make sure it doesn't get stagnant and just stops. We need to keep moving and moving with that. The next one is the emergency management. With the power plant going down, how are we gonna handle the emergency management? And the pay that we used to get from it, are we still gonna get that money? Or is it just limited now with the power plant going on? Is that being addressed?
Yeah, I think, from what I've heard from Tom Walsh, it's probably gonna be another two years that it'll still be funded as the plant is decommissioned, and then the payments will come to a stop, and that, and so we have a couple of years to plan on what we're going to do. I think Tom, on a preliminary basis, of course, he's eliminated, hopefully, the emergency of a, of a nuclear disaster. So the question would be, how often would it be activated? Be snowstorms, you know, nat-, national, you know, natural disasters and emergencies and so forth? So that I think they'll be working, he'll be working on a plan, but it won't, you know, we probably won't have a full-time emergency director anymore, so I think they'll be looking into all of that.
So, yes, I mean, and piggybacking on that is, yes, there's a plan. Tom Walsh has been putting that plan together for six years plus to do that. It will be downsized, the department. You know, right now, his position is combined between EMS and MMA to make a full-time position, and then some. So this, this area will be going down, there won't be as much regulatory needs that have to happen, we won't have as many nuclear drills. Those will cease at some point in the near future with the funding from them. And then we'll be like just any other town, that short of a natural disaster, blizzard, nor'easter coming through, or whatever it may be, we'll have to go forward and address that. Now, that being said, we're also moving forward with the upgrades we were doing with the school and with the town and the phone systems, that redoing the phone systems downstairs so that, you know, when those, when those bills stop getting paid by the pilgrim plant and energy, that those will, we won't have to deal with those bills. But, yes, there is a plan that's been in works for downsizing based upon the needs going forward.
Just a couple more is, the bylaws, I went to look at the regular bylaws online and was reading through them, and it addresses Appendix A, Appendix B. I didn't see those appendix in there when I looked, I could be wrong, but if we can just, if they're not there, can we get them on there so we can refer back to those appendix on the bylaws?
Just on, online?
The online versions, yeah. And my last one is, I'm gonna have my first resident meeting, actually gonna be at the Carver Farmers Market on June 30th, from 12 to 4:00. I'll have a little tent there for people to come up, meet me, and any questions or issues, they can come up and be happy to ask me. All right, and otherwise, thank you very much.
All right, Sarah?
I, excuse me, I originally didn't have anything, but I wanted to address this nuisance bylaw. And I think to, to Bob's point, if we, if that does come to us again, we should be sure the nuisance bylaw actually addresses the particular issues Bob was talking about, because the way it was presented this year did not really address it. It was, it was talking more about private homes and not businesses starting up, you know, early in the morning, going, working on Sunday, that sort of thing. So just something for us to keep in mind.
And the only thing I have is a plug, the Carver Lions Club is cosponsoring with the Friends of the Carver Council on Aging, a golf tournament on Sunday, August 4th, at nine o'clock. We're looking for foursomes to play, we're looking for corporate donations, we're looking for hole sponsors, and for raffle prizes. One hundred percent of the money goes to the two charities, and there's no administrative funds, anything we raise goes to the charities. So that if anybody out there is interested in playing, or sponsoring, or anything of that nature, just contact me directly, (508) 789-3581, (508) 789-3581. Okay, we will move on to.
Alan, do you have anything?
Alan, anything from you?
Oh, geez, nice to finally be remembered, remember? It's a pair didn't want you, but, but thank you all the same, though, I'm all upset tonight.
All right, thank you. We're gonna go to reviewing the goals and objectives for the, the Board of Selectmen and the town administrator. Pass those over to Bob, if you would, please. What I did was to take everything that was turned in to me and try to find the common denominators that were in there. Some of them were not necessarily goal and objectives, and so I didn't include them. Others, you know, were, were very specific. So I tried to include as much as I could to capture the spirit of everything that I received. Obviously, if there's something here that someone doesn't see and they want it considered, that's wide open.
I thought there were multiple things.
Certainly can be done. So that you should each have one for the town administrator and one for the Board of Selectmen. So why don't we start with the Board of Selectmen page? And what we're looking for is to come up with three to five. In the past, we've normally decided that realistically, taking on three goals and trying to actually achieve them, given everything else that happens with the board, is probably enough, but certainly, whatever the board's pleasure is in terms of which ones to choose. I note at the bottom that there was a suggestion that we hold some special meetings over the course of the year to just dealing with our chosen goals and objectives off and on throughout the year. The alternative would be to, or the, or an alternative would be to incorporate them into a healthy portion of our regularly scheduled meetings instead of separate meetings. And the suggestion was also made not to televise those working meetings, because even though they'd still be public meetings, public's certainly welcome to attend, without the distractions of the cameras, it was suggested that it's more conducive to productivity. So, that being said, I'll just read through, excuse me, the objectives that are listed here, and again, you know, wide open to additions or subtractions from this. One, develop a long-term vision of town funding, including plans to deal with budget excesses and deficiencies. Two, provide support and assistance in the construction of a new police station. Three, improve communication with the public, town hall meetings, email updates of activities, et cetera. Lobby the state and representatives on its school funding focus, specifically special education and circuit breaker. Explore town-wide energy efficiencies. Develop strategies to seek and develop new sources of revenue. And regular updates for the public on waste disposal developments and options. So that's sort of what rose to the top, but if someone feels there's anything missing there that they'd like to have considered. My suggestion is that we, I, I, I really think choosing no more than three is wise, but certainly any more than that. So, Bob, anything jump out at you that you'd like to absolutely make sure is one of them?
Well, number seven, of course, the waste disposal. That's gonna be a big one on the horizon. The waste disposal on number seven, for me. Improved communication is a definite, number three, too.
All right, we'll go back and forth, and then, Sarah?
Yeah, I agree with those as well, I like number six, not, sorry, number five, well, I like six, too, but, but I also see missing from here, help encouraging our planning and conservation and recreation departments to update the open space and recreation plan. And the reason for that is akin to what Bob was talking about earlier. If the plan becomes out of date, we're no longer eligible for state funds that pertain to that, so.
Yeah, I, I saw that, and, and, you know, I, I just felt we could do that, but it didn't necessarily qualify as a goal. I think that's something we absolutely should do, so I wasn't suggesting we not do it.
Oh, all right.
I was just trying to put it in terms of something we're spending a year doing.
Sure, gotcha.
And that could be just as simple as calling them up here and seeing where they're at, and then offering them whatever resources we could, so.
Yep. So, all right, having said that, then, I guess number one, and one, three, and five.
Well, you had said six and seven, too.
Well, you know, it'd be nice to do all of them, but you want three.
Well, no, no, it, it's, it's the board's choice, not mine.
Hmm.
But that's, you know, five, five might be a lot, but that's up to the board to decide. All right, Mark?
Well, I, personally, I think number three is a priority, improving our communications with the public. I really think we need to, to develop some new ways of communicating and doing a better job of, of the ways that are already there. Number seven, I agree with Bob, I think that the whole waste disposal development is gonna be really important as time goes on, I think we need to stay on top of that. And I guess, I look at number four and six, I, I think it would be helpful to us as a, as a group to have our, our state representative and our state senator in maybe two or three times a year, just to update us on what's going on at the state house, and they may be able to help us to develop some of these things. We, we, it gives us a chance to speak to them about school funding, it may be a way to, they may have some ideas on some new sources of revenue. I think we, we could gain a lot from, from having a little more insight as to what's going on in Boston and, and ways that may, perhaps they could help our town. So I, you know, I know that's more than three, but I think some of those sort of, sort of go together.
So which, which ones did you like?
Well, definitely three and seven.
Okay.
Definitely three and seven. And if I could just make a comment on the, the paragraph at the bottom, I, I have no issues with the working meetings, but I would like to see all our meetings televised. I would, I would not be a fan of, of not televising them.
I know we've gone back and forth on that one, we've had our quarterly meetings with the school committee, they've been televised sometimes and not the other. I think we have to go back and talk with them again about what we want to do there. Bob, any other considerations? Coming back to you.
Well, Alan?
Right now, three and seven, I'll get, I'll get to Alan. Right now, three and seven have multiple votes, so that, anything else strike you, Bob, that sort of stands out, that?
I agree with the paragraph below, except for the video recording, I think that we should be recorded, let people know what's going on, how it's doing. I kind of would like to see what all the selectmen have for ideas and issues, that we, we all have an understanding of what they thought processes for work, because only having each one, you're kind of like, hmm, maybe something else that was there might have sparked their interest.
Well, that's, that's why I offered everyone the opportunity to bring up anything they had that they feel is missing.
Yeah.
And, and there was a lot of, you know, commonality, it's not like there were dozens, I mean, you had probably the most, so.
Okay, then, I'll just go through some of my list.
And, and we, and, and again, and I apologize, but we're, we're trying to get these in place going into the next fiscal year, too.
Yeah. I had brought up the issue about Selectmen, town administrator appointing authority, to revert back to the town administrator, for certain boards and committees, affordable housing, I think we should be looking at that, along with change to some, change or modify some of our bylaws to affect that, affordable housing and options. The open meeting law and public records, I think that still needs to be worked on here on the board, by not having enough information on our agendas, so I think we could work on something like that. The need to upgrade Sampson Pond boat access, and with this other thing that we just got through listening to, with dredging of the Sampson Pond area with a fire department hookup now, could actually go to that, too. Just.
And, and again, on those, Bob, they're all good, I just wasn't, I, I sort of said, those are things we can address without them being, you know, the year-long goal.
I'm just putting it out there.
Yep, okay.
And then, some of the questions I have from other people is what's gonna be done with the old fire station, that's an issue, if you want to know. The library, some updates to that, to fix, and some rod and painting and whatnot. Town meeting rules, to go through the town meeting rules, talk about those, speaking out two times, and I think we have town meeting committees to be built on. Then meeting with the Crystal Lake and Bates Pond residents about their tax deed, the deed that they had, that they don't have anymore, asking them about creating an association, what needs to be done, what they want done in that area. Removal of buildings in our town at the same time as the police station, when the police station gets demolished, that we look at other buildings that have to be demolished, kind of add them all into the same, same place, because there's different areas that, the building down here near Sabre, that one, little one there, then if we're gonna do the whole ball fields, then we should be looking at the future, because part of that building's gonna be taken down, planned, so maybe do it all at the same time. Create a committee to help residents with clutter and boarding, kind of goes with the nuisance bylaw there, too. And then, one of the things, this goes back to my childhood in Pembroke, we did have a welcome wagon at one point for our town, for new residents that come in, and if they ever wanted to start that back up. Can I kind of finish this with my quick?
And, and you and I got together and discussed them all, and I guess, in, in my mind, I was just making distinctions, I mean, those are things that we, you can bring up and ask, can put this on the agenda, let's address it, as opposed to something we work on for the entire year. Because some of those, like, I think having a meeting of the Bates Pond and the Crystal Lake people, you know, getting together, but I don't know that, that's a year-long project as much as just sort of starting it. So that, that's, that was the process I used in looking at it. And I guess for myself, I'm in agreement with the improved communication, regular, the, 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 the regular updates on the, on what's gonna happen with waste disposal, because, you know, we don't want our residents getting caught short on what's happening there. And I guess the other one I would, I liked was the developing a long-term vision on town funding, including plans to deal with budget excesses and deficiencies. I know the FinCom is already sort of taking a look at something like that, but I think that's something that we can help boards to come after us, if we try to establish some policies of, of what to, what to do and how to look at that. So if I add my initials to that one, that gives us three that got multiple votes, number one, number three, and number seven? And again. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Alan. Did you hear anything, Alan, that interested you?
Yeah, as a matter of fact, I did. I don't have the numbers, because I don't have the sheet stacks, I'm using a phone. However, I also agree that we have to have better and more frequent communication so that the public know what's going on, as well as we should be making sure that we know what's going on with different boards and committees. Second thing I think we really need to do, is I agree with you, we really have to start attacking our long-term financial plans. Because if not, you know, knowing how some of the contracts are going, we're gonna be really hurting status in the next two years. Hopefully, maybe three, but, you know, so we have to do, really get a handle on that. And the third thing is, I think we really, you know, we can't lose sight of the fact that we really have to get the police station built. You know, there's still a lot of work to be done on that and some more obstacles probably to jump over. So I think that's something that should be fairly high in our process, because they've gone so long without a new station. And I think that's probably one of the biggest priorities for the town. So, those are my three.
All right, thank you. Any other thoughts? Again, I, I would suggest the multiple votes were one, three, and seven. And this does not mean these others can't be addressed, you know, in some way, shape, or form. It's just what are we gonna adopt as our goals and objectives to work on, especially if we're gonna have the working meetings, which maybe we can try to incorporate on a quarterly basis through the course of the year. Is, would everyone be comfortable with that, one, three, and seven? Someone wanna make a motion to adopt one, three, and seven as the Board of Selectmen goals for, for 2019, '20?
Make that motion.
For a second? What was that, Alan?
I'll second it.
Further discussion? Those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. So, what we have adopted is to develop a long-term vision of town funding, including plans to deal with budget excesses and deficiencies. Improved communication with the public, town hall meetings, email updates of activities. Regular updates for the public on waste disposal developments and options. And I'd suggest perhaps we even get more involved in discussions as Bob updates us along with the other committee members on what's happening to provide additional resources that may be necessary to, because, again, there may be a district solution to that, but we might have to be thinking about our own solution as well, so. And then I think it's, we're all in agreement to have separate meetings to address these. Doesn't prohibit us from bringing something up during the course of one of our regular meetings, but to have separate meetings to work on them, so. Okay, we will move on to the town administrator goals for 2019 and '20. Excuse me. I'll read through these quickly. Number one, email updates of activities of the town administrator and departments on a regular basis, quarterly, bi-weekly, monthly. Updates of activities of the town administrator and departments on a regular basis, quarterly, bi-weekly, monthly, we decide that. Hold periodic town hall meetings, three to four times a year. Work closely with the schools on finding ways to meet funding needs. Work with all departments individually in developing plans to deal with future funding shortfalls, to find ways to minimize the impact on town services. Maintain effective communication with all town departments through frequent dialogue in groups and individually. Focus on the financial sustainability of the town, streamlining operations and effectively administrating all capital projects. Work with the appropriate individuals and departments to implement the changes needed to qualify Carver as a green community, speaking to your issue brought up earlier, and be eligible for future grant funding. And again, if people had other ideas, we're open to those, but this time, Mark, I'll start with you. What jumps out at you?
Well, communication continues to be an important priority for me, so I think number one certainly, certainly sticks out. I think.
And by the way, we're probably, we can look for five here, because normally that's what we've done in the past.
Okay, as far as the periodic town meetings, is that a town administrator thing, or is that a Board of Selectmen thing? Town hall meeting. So I thought that was something we talked about.
That's a Board of Selectmen, because I mean, you're the conduit to the external.
That's what I would think, yeah. I like that idea, but I'm not sure it's a town administrator thing. I think we need to work on the, on the financial sustainability of the town, so I would say number six is a priority. Number seven is a, is a very short-term priority for me. I don't think it needs to be a town administrator goal and objective for the entire year, but I would hope it would be a goal and objective for the next couple of months, just because I would like to see us be able to get that grant this year.
I mean, it does take a while to get programmed in there, so, you know, when you're looking at, you know, a three-year term, you're not gonna get everything accomplished in one time, but, you know, that is an area that is gonna, you know, need to be focused on this year in order to get that piece moving, because we just finally passed that.
I understand.
And with the update, the Serpent's actually doing a lot of work on this, then maybe it's not appropriate to assign to you.
Yeah, yeah, I understand. I would say one, one, three, and six are real priorities for myself.
One, three, and six. All right, Bob?
Number one, yes, a bi-weekly, at least on off weeks, I think should be, because we have our meeting and then.
I think we'll, we'll come back and discuss the timing, but number one, you, you, yep.
Number three, yes. Number two and number four, I think, and five, I think, number two, no, not at all. Four and five, I think that's a job anyways to do, in my opinion. I don't think that's, is. Number six, yes, and like number seven, Serpent is working on that actively already, and I agree with that. So, basically, one, three, and six would be right now. I have others that I also sent you.
Yep, if you wanna share some of those, that's fine.
The guy to go with number one, I, an easily calendar, accessible calendar, sign up what the town administrator is doing at certain times of the week or whatnot. Then, selectmen have the right to attend department head meetings as part of his review process. Funding is due. No posting on social media until the chair or another selectman approves it. An assessment of all town buildings and maintenance, cost to keep them safe. Meeting with seniors and people who disagree with issues, and with the selectmen being present, so it's an open, frank discussion. Create a new council on aging building for future funding and location. Create the board handbook for each committee that approves regulations and the process that they go through. And we did talk about this, just to let people know.
Right, yeah.
We did talk about this.
Yeah, and, and like I say, Bob, a lot of these, they can be done. I just wasn't sure, I was making a distinction between goal versus just we tackle them, yeah.
So, and then post-quarterly, every account on the town, the town has for boards, committees, commissions or whatnot. So the public has knows on the website, year our financial is, quarterly. Sampson Pond access, like I said, that was another one, I put another one, and then. All the members of the town government have a town email, that was my last one.
Okay, Sarah?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could.
Yes.
Instead of just reading numbers, read what it actually is, please, for my, for out of mind.
All right, right now, we have multiple votes for email updates of activities of the town administrator and departments on a regular basis. Working closely with the schools on finding ways to meet funding needs. Focus on the financial sustainability of the town, streamlining operations and effectively administrating all capital projects. And so I guess, Sarah, when, I guess, mention which one it is specifically as opposed to the number.
I was planning to, yes. So, I have four, and the first one is the, number one, email updates of activities of the TA and departments on a regular basis. Then I have three, work closely with the schools on finding ways to meet funding needs. I have five, five has been a goal that we've had for the past five years. And I think it's important to keep working on that, and that's maintain effective communication with all town departments through frequent dialogue in groups and individually. And then I have number seven, work with the appropriate individuals and departments to implement the changes needed to qualify Carver as a green community and be eligible for future grant funding.
Just so you know, you might have been gone, but we discussed that, and we sort of felt that since Serpent is sort of jumping on that, that maybe it wasn't as necessary to approach that one, but, you know, it's your call. All right, and Alan? Alan?
Did he drop me?
Alan?
He's there.
Okay, you there?
My backpack fingers hit a wrong button.
All right, what, did you have any thoughts? Did you want me to read through them again?
No, that's okay, because pretty much what I think we should be having him concentrate on for a whole year at a time, that pretty much been said. I agree, working with the school department, although I would include the finance committee to come up with good budgets of what everybody needs, because it might not hurt to have an independent third-party group, i.e. the finance committee, taking a look at taste of school and the town, come to longer heads about some items. So I just think it'd be better to have, you know, all three of them working on. Fully concur with the getting the information out of emails. I would like to see it, you know, at least once, just a quick recap, quick mail, it hasn't been anything really expensive of just where we're at with different things, because, you know, we get to a point where, you know, sometimes it's three to four months before we care about how a project's doing, and I think we need to be careful on that. And again, with the long-term, working on the long-term budget.
Okay, so this is sustainability.
Six.
Yeah. And, and I, and I think on the email updates, I think what needs to be, what I think needs to be clear is that oftentimes, the town administrator during these meetings is updating us on a lot of these things, but as the town as a whole isn't necessarily getting updated, unless they're tuning in.
Yeah, I was, I was just going to add that maybe, once we've been updated, then with your approval, that I can go on the town website. Because people, people don't know a lot of the things that are going on.
Well, I mean, or.
And that way, it wouldn't come as a surprise to people when X happens.
You're saying so almost instantaneously as opposed to just periodic updates?
I'm, whatever the board decides, but I think that, once we are updated, then the chair or vice chair, if the chair's not here, would approve posting those on the town website.
Well, and, and again, sometimes the updates that we get from the town administrator may not be everything that he puts into one of these updates, whatever regularity we have, so. All right, so what I have here is, I've got four that are showing up. Number one, email updates of activities of the town administrator and departments on a regular basis, we'll come back to deciding how often. Number three, work closely with the schools on finding ways to meet funding needs, which obviously can involve the FinCom. Number five, maintain effective communication with all town departments through frequent dialogue in groups and individually. And number six, focus on the financial sustainability of the town, streamlining operations and effectively administrating all capital projects. So, those are the four that got multiple votes. Was the board satisfied with the, with those choices for the town administrator?
So, Mr. Chairman, and these are done jointly with the town administrator, as you may recall, as part of our contract, is we jointly have to develop these goals and objectives. So, a couple of comments that I have is that, you know, I do think that, you know, it obviously is important to focus on, you know, several goals, because that goes into developing budget strategy and priorities that are being done. And clearly, you know, kinda working backwards, focus on the financial sustainability of the town, streamlining operations. That is something that's been consistent every year, because we have to retool ourselves in order to survive. And, you know, that goes without saying, is, is kind of the overarching goal and objective of everything that I and the different departments do. So I think that, you know, clearly that needs to continue. Number five, maintaining effective communication with all town departments through frequent dialogue in groups and individually. That is happening. And, and I think anyone talking to any of the department heads recognizes that within the town, the staff, department heads know what's going on. We have monthly meetings, we understand what's going on, we respect each other's efforts that everybody's putting into, so. It's, that exists. That may not have existed five, six years ago, but that exists today, and it's, it's actually working out very well. So, I mean, to keep that as a goal and objective, and again, it is going on, so it's, it's, I'm not sure what there is to focus on there, because it happens and it has to happen to keep our organization running as successful and as effective as it is than any one of the department heads will tell you. Moving forward to working closely with the schools on finding ways to meet funding needs. Certainly, as we know, that the school is the biggest element of our budget, and we have to continue to work in partnership, as we currently do, with the superintendent, the business manager, and the finance director. And I think, you know, some of the efforts that we've been doing over, you know, the last couple of years with the consolidation of the IT department, which is a huge success, with the consolidation of the facilities, DPW, and grounds committee into one organization. That's been great. We've just actually hired our, our new groundskeeper, the town meeting funded, so that person is actually gonna be starting in the next few weeks and be able to help with the groundskeeping. So, I think, again, number three is clearly an objective that, that is the focus that I think we're all working on. When it comes to number one, I think there, there just needs to be more discussion on this, is that, you know, in our department heads, what we are going to be doing is we're gonna be issuing, you know, we do meet monthly, but, you know, when you have a small organization, you have a choice. You can have people push papers, or you can have people get things done. And with a small department and a small organization, all our department heads are, are people that get things done and get accomplished. And I think their record speaks for themselves of what they're able to accomplish with little funding and low staff that's all in there. That being said, is that we have had department head meetings, and part of the discussion is to move forward with kind of issuing a quarterly update for each department that can be submitted, you know, with kind of a one-page document that each department will put together and will kind of highlight what has happened, and it's sometimes it'll be more than a page, what has happened in the past three months and what is anticipated to happen in the next three months and beyond. Just so that everyone is aware of globally, not, not in detail of each project, because that's up to the department heads to do, but globally, what's going on and what their activities are focused on. So, you know, as it relates to number one, that is something that we do plan on moving forward with in the, in the next fiscal year. And we would probably be actually issuing our first one in the, in, in the September, October timeframe as we get ready to go into budget season. Because these goals and objectives, again, are the cornerstones that go into our, our goals and objectives as we move forward. I know there's some discussion that each one of you had on different projects, but a project is just not a project. It comes and goes, it gets completed, it's done. These are long-term goals and objectives that we want to continue in the long term, which I think is making our town so successful that it is, as successful as it is right now. So, that's, that's my comment.
Yeah, and, and just for clarification, the, when it mentions departments here, we're not talking about necessarily the department heads giving us the updates. It's you perhaps passing along in the course of your update, something you know of that's going on in a particular department, just so that. Now, if you want on a quarterly basis to ask the department heads to give us a more in-depth, to include a more in-depth summary, that would be great. But we were, that, this was, I don't think the intent here was for direct input from the departments. This is coming from you. I mean, this could be as straightforward as the update you give us at the two meetings that we have a month, and then that gets comprised into an email that goes out along with any other additional items that you feel the public. It's really a communication piece, more than anything else.
Sure, so let's do this, since this is something new that we're doing, let's start off with the quarterly piece. So that's what we're willing to commit to doing right now. Let's see how it goes this year, and if we need to do that more, we will do that. Keep in mind that we are meeting every two weeks, and we do give an update on what's happening with different projects, that the public has a, has a chance to do it, has a chance to see what's happening. It is picked up by the local paper, and certainly, social media picks up some things, too. What we just don't wanna be plagued with right now is with the limited staff we have, we don't have like larger towns do as a PR person. We don't have a person that can, you know, put together large reports, and I'm not saying you're looking for large reports, but this becomes a big effort. And, you know, we have other towns that, that, you know, they meet every week. And guess what? They get nothing done, because alls they're doing is putting together reports to prepare for the next board meeting. And, and I think that's why, you know, we're trying to focus on getting things done. And it's really the Board of Selectmen, I think, as someone said on item number two, to hold the periodic town meetings. That's the selectmen that do the external communication. Staff is responsible for communicating to you guys what's going on, and the public should be coming, you know, and addressing things, you know. I guess I'm saying, you, you guys and the broader are sending out the political messages to what's happening. We're doing with the details.
I think you may be overblowing what we're imagining. I think you may be overblowing what we're imagining here for the, for the email updates. We're not, this should not drain staff resources. Uh, as I say, it could be as simple and straightforward as summarizing the updates that you gave us, uh, and what happened during our board meetings, uh, and, um, you know, anything else that happens to come up. And then if on a quarterly basis, the departments are willing to give a more in-depth, uh, analysis for what's going on. So, um, I personally, I don't, I think bi-weeklies too often, I think monthly would be good, but not, you know, I really, when you talk about draining efforts and getting things done, this should not be an all-day or half-day project. This should be keeping track of what's been going on and just putting it out there in an email.
Well, that's important to define what expectations are, because some people could be expecting a 14-page report. I'm not saying that's what you're saying, but I mean, that's what we're discussing about expectations.
Well, and, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I guess, for myself, when I talk about something like this, I, I'm just looking for a synopsis. That's all. I'm, I'm certainly not looking for, I'm looking for a, a brief synopsis, and then if we, if we need more information as a board, we can certainly contact you and, and ask more questions. But just, yeah, I'm just looking for a quick overview of, of what's going on and-
And again, it's not really intended, I don't think, for the board. It's really intended as a public dissemination of what's going on here.
Yeah.
Uh, because not everyone does tune in, uh, and, uh, even, even pay attention for that matter. So this way, you, it could just be put out on the, on the town website, here's the town administrator's update coming, you know, once a month, and let's see how the first one looks, and then we can take a look at it, see how it is, and, you know, go from there with, with, you know, critique, uh, and, uh, and see if it's meeting our expectations.
I, I agree with that, all your comments about this, and that's what, we don't want to take away too much time. We just want an understanding of what's going on, updates, like I said, mine is bi-weekly, I have, monthly is fine, let's, let's do that. I have a question for you, Mr. Michael, is what would be your goals and objectives for the town over this next year? Because this is a dialogue between both of us, so I'd like to hear what you, not just what's here on the paper, but you as a town administrator, what do you want to see?
Well, I'm going to focus on number six. I mean, number six is why I was hired to, to here, is to turn the town around and put us in a financial solid footing. So with that, we've developed a strong team that is able to do that. We've changed the finances around in the town. We've built more than anyone ever thought we could build within the tax base. We haven't increased taxes but for the operational override for the elementary school that failed three times. You know, that, number six, is what my focus is. My focus is on that every day. And my focus on that in part of doing number six is developing a strong team. And I'll put our team of department heads and staff up against any town. And we get the job done with the amount of stuff we have. You may want more communications, you may want, you know, to be more liked or something like that with things, but we're, we're here to get the job done. And, and I think that's where our big focus has been. Um, you know, we, we've attracted a high-level team, and we have people coming to work for us, because, you know, we don't, the staff doesn't get into the politics, the staff gets things done. Um, the staff, um, i- is also held accountable for getting things done. So again, I'm going to go back to number six. Number six, in summation, is, is what my priority is.
Alan, do you have anything else? Hit the, hit the button.
I, I think, I, I agree that, you know, that getting our updates, uh, in a very short form, I would not think this should take more than 15 minutes once a week, or every other week. Um, and I do agree with Mr. Rinaldi that a lot of that is, you know, to get what's happening out to the citizens of the town, because they're the ones who elected us. And, as I was saying, Hoken, you know, we get our updates from him, and then we have to make sure we are keeping the populace of Carver updated on what's going on in the town. That's just my thought.
All right, Michael, uh, would you be comfortable with one, three, five, and six?
Yeah, and I think, you know, I, I'd still like to, I, I hear what you're saying about monthly, um, you know, quarterly is something that I've had discussions with the department heads, because we have a idea of how we want to do stuff. Uh, we will try to get it out more fre- frequently than that.
Yeah, but again, it doesn't have to be the, the department head. This is just you updating, like I say, it can be the updates that you give us during the course of meetings, plus anything else that may have come up. Uh, and you might mention a department if there's something specific going on, um, but-
Yeah, but I think, I, I think what's important is what you're, I think what maybe I failed to communicate is I don't do anything without conversation with the department heads. So on a monthly basis, they're going to be involved in this no matter what. If it's monthly, if it's quarterly, it's not just going to be me. Again, it's a strong team. They're going to be involved in every aspect of this. So that's why it is going to rely on them to do, do work as well.
But it could be in the DPW, nothing's changed over the last month, so there's no update to give us on what's going on with the DPW, so.
Well, I mean, I think we all know that something happens in some department, and if we say that, then-
Let's give it a shot on a monthly basis and critique it and see if we're, you know, we, we, it's a, we're, we're trying it for the first time, and I think that it's, it, as I say, it's not for us, we, each of us can call you and have a conversation on any topic at any time, uh, as actually could a citizen if they wanted to.
That's right.
Yeah, and, and again, on that, I mean, that is actually a preferred way of doing it, because, you know, when we're putting stuff out, uh, you know, asking questions and having dialogue is where people learn most of their stuff. And as we all know, people read things differently, people, and, and having an, an understanding of what's going on, and I do appreciate the board members that do reach out to me, and Bob and I had a conversation this morning on three different topics, and I think it was fruitful. I think we agreed on two of them, and one of them we're still, you know, on the fence on, but, you know, um, those things happen. Um, so again, I, I encourage, uh, the, the dialogue that I have with, with most of you, um, in discussing everything, and I think that's, gives you the information. So when you're at the coffee shop, you know, you're talking to your constituents and, you know, being able to dispel rumors or explain what's going on in a more detailed format, uh, which, which is helpful. And, you know, I go back to the issue of having the town hall meetings is, you know, I and staff rely on you as the elected officials to be that conduit on that going outside. Us, as staff, you don't want doing that, because then all of a sudden it becomes, the appearance of political pieces that-
All right, well, that one's not on the table now anyway, so. Uh, does someone want to make a motion to approve one, three, five, and six?
I'll make that motion.
And with, with one starting out monthly?
I second that. And actually, to add, um, just the FinCom on number three.
Okay.
We put that in there, that they, they have a component on that.
All right. Made and seconded. Further discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. And, uh, we will move on now, uh, to the fee increases as proposed. Is there a reason why these lights aren't on over us?
So, yeah, they went out. There's a 50/50 chance. Give it five minutes.
Um, fee increases as proposed by, uh, the treasurer, collector, town clerk, um-
Can I finish up on item number seven? One of the first actions we're going to do when we get the Green Communities Act is see these lights, they're going to go.
Um, okay, and, uh, the municipal leads, okay, so there's a whole list here. They have all been posted for two weeks, uh, on the website. We had the treasurer collector in to talk about, uh, these proposals, uh, two weeks ago. And so, uh, now, uh, you've all got a copy of this. I think you have sent out a backup copy of this. So I guess I'd, uh, bring it to the, uh, board if, um, you've had a chance to review the fees. Were there any in particular, I know-
Can I make just a couple of comments on this, just for perspective, Mr. Chairman?
You may.
All right. Um, yes, these have all been posted for two weeks. Uh, I do want to just make it very clear is that what was passed at town meeting with those two articles had to do with the focus on the treasurer collector's fees and, and fees like the town clerk, which would normally be approved by town meeting. Uh, so that's what, we did post these back two weeks ago. In addition to that, on an annual basis, we do review all other fees in the town, particularly building department fees, and those get adjusted every year, every other year, every third year, whatever they may be. Uh, this year, um, what I did is, because we were already posting those through that process with the two-week notice, I just piggybacked all of the building permit fees on that. So, you know, this is a normal piece tied onto the treasurer collector. Now, tied into that, um, there were, um, particularly one area that came up, um, that was a little bit different, and that had to deal with, um, the cemetery fees, um, that were added to this. And, you know, a couple of components to that is that we did add, uh, this cremation wall, um, into the town, and, um, these fees go into a perpetual fund when it comes from any of these cemetery fees. That perpetual fund pays for the ongoing maintenance and operation of the cemeteries. Um, and even with that, it's not necessarily a sustainable component, and that's why John Woods, who oversees the cemetery piece, put this in. Um, but I, I do want to pick up on what Mrs. Ferran said, is that you will see in other towns that it is appropriate, um, to charge a larger amount, uh, for out-of-town fees. And tied into that is that this is still being subsidized by the town. It's not an enterprise fund. So DPW, our Operation Maintenance Department, is funding some of these out-of-town burials, because the fee doesn't cover that. And, and I would just, as you go through these, just one thing that I would just throw out there for your deliberation, is that you may want to just have it across the board for the cemetery fees, if it's an out-of-town, um, individual, that, you know, they're 20 or 25% higher than whatever the in-town rate is, and, um, you know, something along those lines, uh, just to make some distinction that's in there. But we do have to, you know, start to bring some more money into that fund, because right now it is not sustainable.
Well, so, so that being said, I, I do agree with, um, what was said earlier about the resident and non-resident, uh, cemetery lot fees. And I guess just for myself, I, I would like to see those numbers changed. I would like to see perhaps the residence fee be 650 instead of 7, and I'd like to see the non-resident fee go up to 1,000. And perhaps, uh, that would, that increase would help bring a little bit more money for the DPW, or help offset that, but give our residents a bit of a break.
Do we have any figures of how many burials are in-town versus, um, out-of-town?
Um, we do have those. I don't have those top of my head, but, uh, you know, I think, you know, what Mark's saying is, is, you know, we can, we can balance off the change in the residential. The residential does need to go up, and I appreciate that. It may not have to go up this much, but if you offset that in putting up, and I'm suggesting a percentage on all of the out-of-town pieces, just because that will always just move with, with inflation.
Well, I tend to, I tend to think personally, there's probably a lot more resident burials than non-resident burials, which is why I suggested a, a, a small increase, the six to 650 for the resident, but a, a larger increase for the non-resident. So, anyway, I would make that suggestion.
Okay. So that was-
And just-
650 for residential?
650 for resident, 1,000 for non-resident.
But if I may, Mr. Chair, maybe it should be a percentage, as Mike pointed out, because-
Did someone do the math on 650 to 1,000?
Well, again, I would just say just 25% or whatever the number is.
And, and I would, I would apply that to the cremation walls as well for non-residents.
I, I agree.
Yeah, I agree with that.
And that's where you make it up, Mark, on that side. So everything across the board is that.
And what about, um, non-residents' birth, death, and marriage certificates? Would we be able to apply a similar percentage to them for non-residents?
Um, I, I, I think in talking to the town clerk, um, I think the $10 is, is an appropriate fee for down here. Now, Boston gets 25, um, but it's Boston, everybody's born in Boston, so they use that as a fundraiser, if you will. Um, but our surrounding towns, I believe, are all 10 from what she's done. And interestingly enough, one of our, our funeral home actually still pays us $10, because they cut the same check to every town, and even, you know, they, she talked to us, she says, "Well, we're, we're thinking, I need to raise the rate." He goes, "Well, I'm already paying it, so it doesn't bother me."
Uh, doing some quick math, if my math is holding, is that it's actually, if we went with 650 for the resident, it would be a 50% increase to go to 1,000. Multiply 650 by 1.50. Well, I, I don't- I, I just think there were a lot more resident burials than non-resident, and I guess that's why I'm looking for a larger increase for the non-resident, because I just think we need to help make up some of that money for the DPW that they may, may be subsidizing, so.
So, just a, a big picture view is, uh, we were, we were very fortunate a few years ago, where I was able to negotiate with, uh, Paul Johnson, the ability of picking up some land at the Sportsman Club to expand the central cemetery. Had that not happened, we'd be out of spaces by now. And to some extent, I guess where I'm going here is, when you look at the long-term, and this kind of gets to your 50% point, is I would, I would surmise that you guys want to make sure there's always space for Carver residents, period. And, you know, if others come in, great, but you want to kind of, you know, the supply and demand type thing, if it's cheaper to be buried someplace else, they may go to other towns. But, you know, maybe we're cheaper right now, even with the, the 25% number from others. Um, so, you know, the bigger the number is, is probably not a bad thing for long-term space availability for the town.
How would, how would the percentage work? We, we'd have to vote to change the base in order to increase the out-of-town-
You know, to that cell, not just northwest of Long Island?
Like this is other.
No, no, they're, they're, they're starting, they're starting to grow. It's something I think we need to keep an eye on.
Hey, Alan, uh, your phone's not on mute.
Oh, okay, sorry.
However, good to know that we're in for a storm.
Keep an eye on that cell forced by Long Island.
Anyway, I guess my point is, if, if we say it's going to be 25% more, we're going to have to meet and increase the base in order to know what the 25% is. So as long as-
Yes, and I think that's what Mark was saying. If you look at, right now, the cemetery for residential is 600. He was saying move that to 650.
Right.
Once you move that to 650, then figure out what the percent that you want to choose is on top of that for out-of-town.
I, but I guess it just, it, to me, then it's not that hard simply to pick the new upper number, because if you're going to change the lower number, then-
Yeah, whatever you want to do.
I also like round numbers.
Yeah.
I don't know, maybe it's just me, I like, I like a nice round number.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I, I'm more comfortable with the 650 and 1,000, because I think you're going to have to get together to change the 650 to get the increase, and plus it would be, to get the 650 and 1,000, you actually have to do more of a 50% increase than 25.
I, I guess I would, I would make a motion that we amend the cemetery lot resident to 650, the non-resident to 900, and that we add another-
900 from 1,000?
I'm sorry, no, to 1,000, I'm sorry, the non-resident to 1,000. And then I would make a mo, I would also suggest that we add a non-resident cost to the cremation wall niche, perhaps 1,200.
What is it now?
Well, it's 1,000, we make it 1,000 for residents and 1,200 for non-residents. Right now, it's 1,000 for everybody. I, I just think there should be, I think residents should get a break.
All right, so for cemetery, we've got 650 for resident, 1,000 for non-resident. For cremation wall on all rows but the bottom row, it's 1,000 for resident, 1,200 for non-resident. For the bottom row-
For the bottom row?
It's $800 for resident, and 1,000 for non-resident.
1,000 for non-resident, yeah. Anyway, that's my motion.
Get a discount on the bottom row.
Uh, any, any other suggestions?
I'll second that for discussion.
Well, I mean, I figured we'll take it all in one motion for all the fees.
All right, so, one of my things, as I always go back to, the fee has to be supported by the evidence of, is this needed for this increase to do the work? So if the workload's increased, and we got one earlier from the clerk's office, that actually stated, this is why we're increasing it, because X, Y, and Z has all increased, so they've shown that, yes, they need that increase. Um, the cemetery, they showed other towns of what they're doing, and I don't think we should increase fees just because other towns have, fees are higher than ours. Um, I'd like to see something that says, this is what it costs us to bury somebody here, and what it costs to put into the crematory wall or whatnot, and is that fee enough to do it, or is it more or less? Um, that's where I have a little challenge with this, when we start talking about fees of anything going up. I mean, I want to see clarification of why we need the fee to go up, not just because another town has higher fees than us, but I'd like to see it qualified.
I thought this was driven because DPW said that the, the perpetual fund is becoming deficient.
That's right.
They did say that, yes.
Didn't you just, you just mentioned that they were, they were subsidizing these, correct?
So, this is what I'm just saying in general, because we say we're, hold.
Right.
All the fee structure, I want to put that in general. I totally agree with the cemetery fees.
Yeah, I, I agree that our fees should, should be justified, absolutely.
Right, but they have to justify all the fees. So in some of these, I don't see any justification, not in the cemetery, but in some of the other ones.
Well, let me address that, because I think your point's spot on, is that we're not going to recommend fees unless there's a justification for fees, which is why staff has been working diligently on this for all the fees. Uh, in, 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 a good amount of the towns is when they have their, their permitting, uh, planning departments, they're generally subsidized 100% by their fees. Carver's not that. Carver's subsidized by the taxpayers. And this comes down to user fees, is when you have contractors that are coming in and building, is that, and those contractors require inspections, that that's a- building, is that, and those contractors require inspections, that that's a fee for service. And the fee for service could cover, should cover those expenses. I think we're saying the same thing. So if we look at the cost of revenue that come, or the revenue that comes in from the pep office through the different pieces, building, electric, plumbing, concom, planning, et cetera, we're showing 100, over $100,000 deficit every year in not collecting enough fees to cover these expenses. And this is where there's a balance, is Carver does not want to be at the top. We've had policy for the last five years I've been here, try to stay around the middle or just slightly above the middle for all of our fees, so that we don't persuade development or improvements to the town, but at the same time, we can cover some of our costs, and we will subsidize the rest through taxpayer money. So by no means should you or anyone think that we're making money off of this, because we're not, because each department is in a deficit.
That's why I just want to make sure that the public knows, is that the fees that are being put on here as being increases, that they understand that it came back by our employees, that it was driven by the workload that they're doing, and that's why the fees are being, not just because some other town, because like I said, the cemetery, they showed other towns of what they charged for it, and that can't be the justification.
Completely agree.
Has to come from our town.
Yep, that's what it is. Yep.
Any other fee discussion? Someone like to make a motion incorporating the changes for the resident, non-resident burials and cremations?
Make a motion that we approve the fee schedule as printed with the, with the amendment that we raise the cemetery lot resident, that we change the cemetery lot resident fee to 650, the cemetery lot non-resident to 1,000. We create a new costs niche on cremation wall, all rows except bottom, as 1,200 for non-resident, and niche on cremation wall, bottom row, non-resident for 1,000.
And the, everything else?
And the, what's printed stays the same, 1,000 for the, all rows except bottom, and 800 for bottom rows. Those become resident fees.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Further discussion?
Just the one, one other thing is about the, the solar. If you can just explain the difference between the commercial and the residential component, going by kilowatts and?
Sure. We actually ran the numbers on this, and it's actually giving the residents a rebate compared to what the original rates were, because I don't have the, I could go back and do the math, but it was, it was something along this line, is that there was a minimum of $50 permit fee for residents, plus X number of dollars a panel, plus a $35 hookup, and it was coming out to, I believe the number was like $118 or something like that per, per installation of solar. And so now, right now, by using the $10 kilowatts, most residential units are eight to nine kilowatts, so it's going to be an $80 to $90 fee. But when you're doing the large projects, is that, you know, that we used to, we, we actually led the state, and we do that in all of our solar analysis and fees and everything. We're, we're the pioneers in this, and, and many people follow us. But we originally started to charge by the panel, and that was great when we had some large projects come on. But then as panels became more efficient, they were able to put more energy in a smaller footprint, so they needed less panels. And so that's why this change has gone to doing it by the kilowatt. So from a residential standpoint, anyone putting solar or battery storage in their house, or solar, let me stick with solar, it's going to be cheaper than what it was before. And then obviously, from the commercial, then, then it expands based upon the volume that they're putting up.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? The ayes have it, it's unanimous. Okay, next item on the agenda. Approve solar tax agreement for Center Street Carver Solar 1 LLC at 72 Center Street.
Did we skip over the committees?
Nope, that's the next one.
Okay. As far as the Solar Street LLC, I'm going to recuse myself from this as I have previously because I'm in a butter.
For 72 Center?
For 72 Center.
Okay. So 72 Center is a small project, and we are going to be using the same standard form that we use on all our solar projects, subject to any council revisions. This is for a 20-year agreement at .6 megawatt, so again, it's a small project, and this is going to be an annual payment of $11,704 is what this one comes out to be. Do we want to do one at a time? Do you want to participate in the second one?
Yes, I'd like to.
Okay, so, that's the first one.
Questions? Well, someone wanted to make a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, I, because we don't have the actual physical document here of the contract. I don't think we should be voting on it as of yet, just so I like to read something before I approve it.
So Bob, on that, I forwarded you the two documents that we used for the last two.
Right.
The next one is identical. This is the standard process we do for the selectmen all the time. What you're voting on is the terms, which is the numbers that I've just given you, 20 years, the $11,704. And then from there, the council just puts that into the final form for the document. Again, there's not going to be any difference than what's, what's in the form, and I'm more than happy to share that with you when you have it. But again, the board votes on the terms, and then the council just, just, because these are standard protocol-type things.
Yeah, I thought they were cookie cutter, essentially.
They are, they are. And what I did is just because, I, I just asked council just to review it before we do it, because we did, I think the last two we did were in November, I think it was, might have been December, that we did two last year, and I just asked them to do a quick review, but they've been so focused on this whole issue.
Just to be clear, if we put the last three down side by side, they all essentially read the same?
That is correct.
Other than the terms.
Correct.
Correct.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Yes, I just want to make sure, at a future date, will we be deciding where this money's going to be going?
So the board has already voted that at our last meeting, as related to the modifications that you've done with future solar projects, as we discussed, where they're depreciated items. So a third of these funds will go into unfunded liabilities, O-PED and pension. The second third will go into a sinking fund for the middle high school, and the third will go and offset money going into the capital and debt stabilization fund, which will free up an equal amount staying in the operating budget, thereby increasing the operation budget by, in essence, a third of whatever the projects are. So you've already voted that for your policy last time. This project that we're talking on right now won't be, this $11,000 won't be online until the last quarter of this calendar year.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that everybody was clear on that.
Yep.
Further discussion? Being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No, I want to see it written.
Did you vote aye, Alan?
Yes, I did, I voted aye.
Okay, thank you, so it's three to one. All right, next, dissolve committees and boards created.
Wait, wait, we get the second one?
Well, the second one comes after that.
Yep, 196 Tremont Street.
But that appears after the dissolved committees.
Well, how did that happen?
I don't know.
Oh.
See, in mind that dissolved committees come before?
Oh, you know what? That bullet was supposed to replace the two bullets above that.
Ah, okay. At any rate.
What would you like to do, Mr. Chairman?
We're going to follow the agenda. Dissolve committees and boards created by the select board that haven't met in six months and have no minutes on file with the town clerk's office per bylaws. I talked to Michael earlier, and I know, Bob, you raised the same point. When I suggested that we put that off last time, I probably should have been more clear that I, I wanted to see them sort of posted, so people could see which committees were, and, and boards were going to be up for discussion. And so that, I agree that we should post them for the, in, in advance of our next meeting, so people can see what they are. And I'd also like to have, ask to have town council, you know, take a look at all of them, just make sure we're, that, confirming what the process is with all of them, and then we can deal with those at our next meeting.
If I could, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to see us send a letter to the chairman of each one of these committees, advising them that we're talking about disbanding the committee, and letting them know the date of the board meeting where we're going to disband them, and ask them if they have any, any reasons why they shouldn't be disbanded to, to attend the meeting.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's fine. I have, I have no issue with that, with letting people know. I know in some cases, the bylaws are very specific, and it's not as if we have a choice. In other cases, it, it, there is a choice, in other cases, they're, they're fine to continue. So that's why I say I think it would be good to have council take a look at those that are up for grabs, to sort of give us an indication whether we even have the authority to, to dissolve or maintain the committee.
That's fine. I'd just like to see us make every effort possible to, to advise them. And I, and I also think that this is something we should consider putting on our agenda every year, perhaps in, I don't know, perhaps in November or early December, just so we can address this on an ongoing basis, and advise town meeting, when, put it in the warrant, that these, these committees have been disbanded, so.
Yeah, just, sure.
Something going forward.
Absolutely, yeah. All right, so we'll just table that until the next meeting, if that's good with everyone?
And then, Mr. Chairman, I mean, I think there's two components to this, is one, I think you're correct in, in how the bylaw reads, is something's just automatic. But then there's also, the selectmen have the authority to appoint committees and disband committees, you know, as you see an issue has been resolved. What we have done with most recent new committees that we've done, we've, in essence, built-in sunset clauses with them, so that they would expire after a building project's closed out, so they automatically end, or something along those lines that we've done. So we've tried to, you know, make sure that they either retire automatically, like we did with governance committees, after the, one of the town meetings, their governance committee expired. So those are the types of things.
Well, again, if it's spelled out, it's spelled out, and that's why I'd like to see, make sure that we do a legal review to make sure we know what authority we have or do not have in, in looking at each of these.
Absolutely.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Dunham?
One problem about making, sending notices to all the chairmen of these committees, there are some committees, we don't have the faintest idea who the heck's on the committee still, or who's the chairman or the vice chairman, because we don't have any minutes to, you know, go back years, don't have any agendas to go back years. So, I mean, it's not really going to be practical for some, but I think it's, I agree, it's very important.
Well, I would just suggest that we send a letter to the last chairman we have on record. I mean, we have a record of somebody who was chairman, and, and I would just.
Or even a committee member, if you, or whatever.
That's right. I, I just think we should make every effort possible to notify these folks.
And, and again, if they can't be reached, they can't be reached.
That, that's right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Our town reports have a listing of committees for those, so going back into the town reports, you should be able to find out who is on those committees and.
Yep.
Figure that out.
And you're absolutely right, Bob. I mean, some of those are printed in the town report. However, the, the controlling document is also the clerk, and in her book, if she doesn't have somebody that's signed in and been sworn in that year, then technically, they don't exist. I think that's part of the discussion here.
Well, that's, again, that's a technical issue that, again, there may be a committee we want to continue, but it's not within our authority. It was appointed by town meeting, they didn't meet town meeting's regulations, and so it's dissolved automatically because of the, what the bylaws say.
That's right, but the town clerk does have a chairman on record. It may be a chairman from six years ago, I don't know, but there is a, there is a last-recorded chairman, and I guess that's what I'm suggesting we notify that person.
All right, so we'll just table that and take it up at the next meeting. All right, next, approve solar tax agreement for Center Street Carver Solar 1, 70, uh?
Nope, we just did that.
I'm sorry. Well, it reads 72 there.
Yeah, 72.
All right, oh, yeah, I'm sorry, this is written differently. All right, so now we're doing 196 Tremont Street.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and as the agenda said, again, obviously, these have been approved by the planning board and the conservation commission for construction. This project is one of a larger group that will be forthcoming from Borrego Sol, Borrego Solar. Again, they have been approved, they're in the pipeline to get their interconnect agreement. This one probably won't be completed until this time next year, but they're moving forward with getting financing for this one. This one also has a battery storage unit to it, and it's under the Smart 2 program versus the other one, which is in the Smart 1 program. This one is going to have an annual payment of $71,930. So back to what Alan asked before, that would be divided by three, and, you know, 20-some dollars would be put in each one of those pots every year, as to how this would work out. So, again, that is for one, where was I? I'm sorry, 196 Tremont Street.
Yep. And again, the, the terms were, again?
Terms are identical, subject to any.
No, no, the, the amounts.
Oh, the terms are 100 in, I'm sorry, $71,930.
For what period of time?
This one is for a 20-year period, and this one's for a 3.7 megawatt DC version. The one we did previously was for a point 06, a point, or 0.6 megawatt, so it's, it's a large facility.
And again, by doing the deal this way, i- if, if the state takes action on solar and batteries as personal property for tax purposes, we are relieved of needing to worry about that by doing it this way.
That is correct. We have a, if the state law changes, then all assessments change. We now have a legally, we will, with these being signed, have a legally binding contract that's irrelevant of taxation with these companies, that council has advised us for the last five years. It gives us more stability should anything change in the future, that we would have a legally binding contract, which is why we go in this direction. What we're also able to do is, is by doing this, I'm actually able to negotiate a higher price, because it gives these companies some guarantees, so when they do their financing, their stability as to what those numbers are going to be, and they pay for stability. We're at, you know, I, I was just talking to my counterpart in, in another budding town, I won't mention by name, but, you know, these are higher than, and they always are, than what they're able to negotiate.
All right, and again, the contract is going to essentially be the, the same as the prior contracts, other than the terms?
The, that is correct. Subject to town council tightening anything up, that they, they should choose to tighten up.
Does someone want to make a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Further discussion? Being none, those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No. Opposed?
Wait till I say oppose, Bob.
Sorry. It, it passes four to one. We move to the town administrator update at 8:30.
I caught that dig. Yes, Mr. Chairman, it is now late at night, but we can avoid executive session, I hope. Just real quickly, a couple things for updates. Tomorrow, we're meeting with the recreation committee. They're continuing to move forward with redeveloping the King Street property. I think when that project gets complete, one of the items that's been discussed with the King Street property is that upon completion, when that's done, is that the selectmen should take the initiative to file a chapter 97 on that for that park, once it's completed, so that, you know, as we're putting in $600,000 into that, and future money on top of that, it's a major investment of the town, and it's, it's, it's for multiple uses, and we want to keep it multiple recreation and park uses that are there.
That would have to be a town meeting action, correct?
No, that can be done by the board of selectmen, I believe, but I will ask council on that. Second to that is that we have moved forward through multiple interviews, and have selected a new town planner, a planning director. This individual would be slated to start in the second week in July. We generally do two rounds of interviews. The first round is with myself, the HR director, assistant town administrator, and the chairman of the planning board. And if people pass that interview, then we send them to a second round. The second round is with other department heads, and also the office manager or office coordinator, Deb Deneen, for the permitting office, who would be working for this person, just to make sure that that is a correct fit. The individual that we've hired has, or we've offered the position to, and has accepted, is, has significant planning experience, significant economic development experience. I've talked to, at Bob's suggestion, Wilson Clare today, and gave him an update on what's going on, and he actually did some research and was very happy with the pick. what's going on, and he actually did some research and was very happy with the pick. So we're looking forward to, to having a new team member. In the meantime, Stephen Cole is providing some technical assistance for us on an hourly basis, and will continue to do so until we can have an orderly transition. Stephen's, you know, heading up a few projects, particularly the senior survey, and I anticipate having some assistance from SERPED over the next month as well, just to keep things moving along. That is all I have. All right, we will move to minutes, licenses, topics not reasonably anticipated by the chairman, forty-eight hours in advance, I don't believe we have any of that this evening. Request for a common victual license, Rick's Fresh Seafood, DBA Fresh and Friendly Seafood Market. What's the pleasure of the board?
Kyle Lou, we approve.
Second.
Further discussion?
Where is this located? Is this going to be over here at the...
South Coast.
Hmm? One forty-five South Main Street?
It's going to be in, in the little plaza there at, in South Carver.
Where the smokehouse is?
The smokehouse, okay, that's what was in short, the location.
Smokehouse, Alan, next to the smokehouse. Motion made and seconded, further discussion? Being none, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? We move to the minutes of June fourth, what's the pleasure of the board? Motion to approve.
Second.
Further discussion?
Thank you. So, Mr. Chair, I sent a couple really minor changes to Elaine and I think Shelby too, hopefully, okay? And they were basically that, and I don't know why, how this happened, but at any rate, my appointment, my reappointment to the South Shore Community Action Council was on the agenda as a separate item, but it doesn't show up on the minutes as a separate item, so I just wanted that put in, that it was a unanimous vote. And then, a very minor point, under the proposed fees, I wanted it to, the minutes, to reflect that I wanted to make sure that the comparable town fees were, and were out there for the public and posted, which they have been done, so.
All right, so basically, are those going to be incorporated, those have already been incorporated into the new minutes? Shelby? Okay. All right, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Bob had asked me about the review and release of executive session minutes, and upon investigation, I guess they're in the hands of council, they need to go through them and determine what can or can't be released. We should have those hopefully for the next meeting? Do we know? Can we urge? They have them, they've been bogged down with some of the litigation stuff going on, but we will urge them like we've done before. Okay. Mr. Chairman? Yes.
Are those all, are those all the executive session meeting minutes for the town that haven't been approved, or are they just the recent ones?
So those are the ones that have been screened by staff, that we've gone through and the items have been completed, and we send them off to council, because they have to go through them from personnel issues, from different legal requirements before they're done, and they do the final screening, and if they have to redact something, they do the final redacting. And there, there's multiple that are up there, so it's not just one or two, it's multiple sets that they're, they're going through. Okay. But Bob, just so you know, it is in process, we, we have been trying to do it, you know, it just gets down into one of those issues that they've been busy on some other activities, as we all know. Our next meetings are July second, August sixth, September third, the seventeenth, then we go into the, two, two a month after the, after we get out of August. Was, do we need to, the executive session? We do not, and, and just without going in any detail, I'm waiting for the dispatchers to get back on item, the first item, and then the MCAT, I'm waiting for council's review on, this has been in process for two years, and I'm waiting for them to just give us an update on that very well. That being said, I'll accept a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn. And I'll accept a second.
Second.
Further discussion?
[inaudible].
Alan, can you give us an update on the storm down in Long Island that we heard about earlier? Block Island?
Just past north of Block Island, and now, oh, let's see, heading across the opening there against the bank.
Should we anticipate any issues here later this evening?
No.
Okay, thank you, Alan. All right, good night, everybody, thank you for joining us.